Call is meeting order. Tonight, we're gonna be led by the pledge. Addison Whitworth, she's a student at Blackman Elementary.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Addison. I'd like to welcome everybody to this special call meeting in regards to zoning, the proposed zoning of Blackman Elementary. So before you get into your presentation, Mr. Odom, I'd like to, I know we've got several guests here, just let everybody know tonight, hopefully when we leave here, we'll come up with a zoning to take to the public hearing, which for everybody is put on your calendar February 13th at 6:30. You also have another, you can contact any of the board members with any questions or anything you want to, in regards to anything. But next Thursday night at a Rutgers Board meeting, we have a comment section on visitors where we allow you three minutes. So I just wanted to put that out there to you that, you know, if you want to speak at that time, in regards to it, feel free to. But the main meeting we'll have is a public meeting on the 13th, so. Any board members have any questions? All right, Mr. Odom, we'll turn it over to you.
Okay, we'll begin tonight. I'd like to kind of refresh the board on some of the issues we faced, some of the options we considered and also, Mr. Morgan, if you can put that up in front of us. The issue is, the first one, on December 12, 2012, and the reason we have that date, that is the end of the fourth month of school, which is usually fairly stable for us, so we're using these numbers. The enrollment was 1,108 students, and that represents a growth of 103 students over the same fourth month ending on 2011, 2012. The second point, using a K-3 people teacher ratio of 1 to 20, which is a state ratio, or the states' ratio for grades four through six is a 1 to 25 ratio, then the 103 additional students translates into four or five additional classrooms growth this year. That's what we had to accommodate. Another fact, there are currently five portable classrooms being utilized at Blackman Elementary, and they're all being used for fifth grade instruction. They have two music teachers, the second music teacher is on a cart, and the guidance counselor is already on a cart. Ms. Ford has taken the teacher workroom spaces that were originally not for an elementary school to be used as instruction, but now, they're now being used as instruction. So we've taken a lot of our extra space that we have was built in the original design. And the other thing that's kind of the issue, development of multifamily dwellings is increasing in the Blackman Elementary zone, and so I think that's one of the reasons we saw that increase. Rutherford County as a whole this year, out of our 45 schools, increased by 1,000 students, and 103 of those, which is over 10 percent in this one school. So that draws special attention to the growth. I think it's related a lot to some of the development in the area. So then, let's take a look at possible solutions, and this is what we looked at as the, myself and the staff here in the central office, we've shared some of this with you in the past. One is to build an elementary school, that's your option. The last time that we estimated this and use it for health and ed and that sort of thing, was supposed to be about $26.4 million. That would be the cost. To do that, since we do not have current property to do that, you'd still have to acquire that, so you're probably 15 to 24 months out, you know, before, if you decided to do that, before you could activate that. So you're looking close to two years in that. The other issue would be to add portables, which we've already done with five portable spaces there. There's some issues with that that you need to kind of understand as we look at it. If we have that estimated annual growth of 80 to 100 students a year at Blackman Elementary, if that pattern continues, we would conservatively need at least four additional classrooms next year. So what does it cost to add those classrooms? Each double wide portable with setup, of course, you have to do the wiring, you have to build the ramps and that sort of thing, cost us about $80,000. That's what we use for budgetary purposes for a double wide. If you move existing double wide portables, it's about $15,000 with wiring and excess ramps. Of course, we have 149 portables in Rutherford County schools, you know, at this time, so since you're using two double wides probably, you're $160,000 or at least $30,000. The other problem with adding additional portables is, one of the factors that we have now is the core facilities are not accommodating this larger number. Basically, our elementary schools, we designed them for around 850, you can get up to 1,000, but when you start getting to the 1,100 range, you really start having additional issues. And one of her additional issues, you say you started lunch, I believe, at about 10:20 and finish at 10:01, something like that, you told us. So if you add four more classrooms or something there, again, that's simply gonna back up your lunchtime additionally. So that's a concern for us in that. It also affects other things such as, you've got one gym, so you have to look at how long you make your gym periods, or do they have gym as often? I've been a principal, I know exactly what she's trying to do, and schedule that is a very difficult thing to do. Also, that begins to interfere with anything else in related arts, your music, your art, that sort of thing, is the more classrooms you add, when you get over capacity, how do you schedule the time with those students in those classrooms? So adding portables is really not a desirable thing to do. Could be done, and you know the capacity out there, you know kind of where the portables are sitting when you do that. I mean, there is some ground space, but it really begins to take up any free space that's left much, very quickly. The other, third option down there is to rezone Blackman Elementary to the use of total enrollment. So as the staff and I looked at this, we started looking at, what's the school's closest to minimize rezoning, moving students, that sort of thing? So when you look at that, Barfield Elementary already has 999 with four portables there. That's not a particularly good option for us when we look at that. Another close one really on that side of town is Rock Vale Elementary. They have 820 enrolled, but they also grew by 44 students this year. That area's beginning to grow again, if that pattern occurs again, then you have them up very close to 900 very quickly. So is that a solution that would last long? Probably not so. Now Brown's Chapel has 667 students in this same time period. That one, again, could accommodate the 850, at least, you know, probably comfortably. It's 4.9 miles away, it's the closest. So as the staff recommendation, our recommendation would come in, number four, the director's recommendation would be to rezone some Blackman Elementary students to Brown's Chapel. And so here's some facts, little facts about Brown's Chapel that kind of leads us to looking at this. Brown's Chapel is one of our newer schools, it opened in 2009, 2010. So it's not a school that's been retrofitted or anything like that, very nice school, one of our nicest elementary schools. Again, 4.9 miles from Blackman Elementary. Brown's Chapel has an additional enrollment capacity without adding portables, and is currently, and is not currently in a high-growth area. In fact, I went back and looked at the state's report cards, even in 2009, 10, it had 640 students. Well, you know, when you look up there now what they are at 667, it really, in about three years, has not grown that much. They're not developing basically in their current zone. So it's a school that could handle the numbers and would probably not be flooded with other development immediately. I will say Brown's Chapel has lots of vacant land in that area, so if it, if and when it does start developing, you will see growth there, you know, relatively quickly. But right now, there's not a lot of things in the planning commission off for, specifically in the existing Brown's Chapel zone. So Blackman's current zone is contiguous to Brown's Chapel. So again, as we looked at areas, since Rock Vale wasn't a good option, Barfield wasn't a good option, I mean, you don't want to have to cross one zone to get to another. That's transporting students even further. So we look for areas, and Brown's Chapel does, but up against, it's contiguous to the current thing we have for Blackman Elementary, the zone for that one. The other, I guess, E down there, in the area that we're recommending for you to look at for possible rezoning, most of these students in this area selected for rezoning have the option of attending a Rutherford County or Musburger City school. These students actually have two options because they reside in the city. When Blackman Elementary was built, it was in the county, as we know with annexation and growth around Musburger City has expanded it. Same was true for Barfield at that time. So basically, there's more than one option for most of the people that's affected by this this evening. So I'll let Mr. Morgan, if he will, kind of put up the map for us, and then I'll let him begin to look at it. Now, I asked him tonight, from what we looked at a little bit earlier, if you're looking at your map, if you see the red hashed lines, that is the current Brown's Chapel zone. And that's this area right up here, he's gonna expand it later. That's the current Brown's Chapel zone. The area that we're recommending to add to that, which would be about 130 students, is this area right down here. It's in the, there's dots on your map to show it. So you begin to see, this area again would be added, and you would actually increase the Brown Chapel's zone, this line would drop down and come around this other area to pick that up. We looked a lot, very hard, at the area over there, first around Medical Center Parkway, some of that area over there. That's certainly closest to Brown Chapel and all, there's just not many students there. That's developed a lot, much of it commercially, so it's not a lot there. The other thing that we have, then we have to come back another way, it really didn't make a lot of sense to go way over from Blackman Elementary and go way over to the Rock Vale side, because you begin to change the distance. If it's 4.9 miles from Blackman Elementary to Brown's Chapel, then you certainly increase mileage very quickly when you go south and kind of west of where Blackman Elementary happens to be right now. So we did look for areas that would be the closest distance you can go to Brown's Chapel right now. So, Mr. Morgan, do you, I'm gonna let you do some explaining of the area that you got picked, and he's got numbers in those areas for you to look at this evening.
One thing to keep in mind as you're looking at this map, all these little blue numbers that are in these boxes, those are the elementary school students that are in these little subdivisions or on this street. We looked, we looked at the areas that have the, that again, as Mr. Odom said, are contiguous to the Brown's Chapel zone, and have the highest numbers available in a dense or small area. So we picked up first along Manson Pike, and one of the big things that we saw on Manson Pike, there's this little hash area right down here, and that's a brand-new apartment complex that's almost completely built out now, around 200 units. We're looking at anywhere from a one-bedroom efficiency to a one-bedroom studio, and then all the way up to a three-bedroom. And there are quite a few two- and three-bedroom units that can accommodate either a small family or a single-family kind of setup. It is close, it's right out the back door of the high school. High school students could very easily walk to and from, so we kind of looked at that as well. And then, we looked at growth potential on Manson Pike, and we drove out there several times, myself and Mr. Odom, and also Mr. Snell, and some people from his office, and one of the things that we noticed is, there are several plots of land that are for sale on Manson Pike between 840 and the interstate, and they're all, they're not two and three acres, we're talking 10 to 40 acres. So you see the multi-level building that's gonna happen along there. If not, you'll see residential communities popping up and down through there, but they'll be big, they're not gonna be small. And based on that apartment complex, we knew that that was one of the first things that had easy access to Manson Pike, which was also easy access to Brown's Chapel, and after talking to Mr. Snell as well about the transportation, being able to get kids to and from, that was also one of the easiest routes to get buses up and down that area. One of the reasons, we looked at the other side of the interstate, actually, we had looked at it with the previous board when we were doing the zoning for Brown's Chapel to begin with, and at that time, we felt like there wasn't enough happening on that side to take it. But as time has gone on, and we need to find an area that's somewhat stable too, to go along with this area that's growing really fast, you know, the things that are over here, as Mr. Odom said, there's high commercial over on the, sorry, Medical Center Parkway, and it takes up almost half of it. Well, another third of that is the battleground, that's not going anywhere. So what you're left with is two small neighborhoods, and they're relatively small compared to the rest of the area, that pick up about 30 on that side. And there's not going to be a lot of expansion for that area. So that's kind of why we are, have looked at the areas we have.
The, our thoughts, it's about 130 students in this area to rezone. Is this a long-term solution? No. We've been listening and reading the paper and all, Musburger City is considering an elementary school somewhere in that area, and certainly if they erect one in that area, then the dynamics, you know, changes. You know, if that doesn't happen for some reason, then we will be looking at that 26.4 million or something sometime to deal with that. But, you know, working together with Musburger City in that, I think the dynamics can change in that particular area. So our recommendation now is to move about 130 students, which again moves Brown's Chapel up to close to 800 or so in that range, would give Blackman Elementary another year maybe growth, or certainly stretch on two years, but would give another year or so growth in that. Really, if you go down and pick up much more, some of those areas are just almost inside of Blackman Elementary now, I mean, that's obvious. But our goal is to reduce the numbers at Blackman Elementary. Our goal is not to fill Brown's Chapel, so we didn't look other places to fill Brown's Chapel. The goal for this rezoning is to try to get some relief in the short term, especially for Blackman Elementary. So there's not a lot of choice, you have to go into the Blackman Elementary area to give them relief. And so about 130 students there, you've got numbers, if the board would, wants to elect to include anything else, there's numbers in those blocks that might be, if you want to go above 130, but I think maybe if the city goes ahead with their school, that that might do it for us, you know.
Mr. Stone?
Yes, sir.
Even with moving these 130 students, we're still...
She's open.
Yeah, we're still gonna be stuck with the four or five additional, what do we have, five portable? Are those, are those single or wide?
One's double, isn't it?
One is a double wide, maybe up in three or six.
I mean, we still have those even with this movement, so.
And I think we'll meet that, but what we're seeing is, some of the area we're zoning has recently become the fastest-growing area. So if you include, if we add to Brown's Chapel some of the fastest-growing area, maybe she gets out of next year growing to 80 to 100. Maybe, maybe there's two years there if you don't have that, unless on the Rock Vale side, the Highway 96 side or something begins to grow very quickly again, which could happen.
Mr. Tucker?
It says most students, do we have a number that have a city school option?
About, go ahead. Yeah, about, I counted 838 of our students also live in the, at the Scales school zone.
How many?
838 of our students that attend Blackman also are dual-zoned for Scales Elementary.
So that rough math, close to 80 percent. Okay.
And Scales is how far, you know, approximately?
I would say about the same distance away from Brown's Chapel.
Yeah, I think, I measured three, three and a half miles.
I would imagine that's about the, because you literally just go, go down Fortress and turn, and then go down St. Andrews and go there.
Mr. Tucker?
Yeah, in the long term, I mean, if we get 100 this year, we do this, we just kind of, short-term, you know, 100, the next year, we really got an issue. How much, when do we think we'll know something? How much conversation are we having with city schools to see what they are planning to do? Because if they're not planning to do something, they don't do something, so we're gonna have to make that part of our building program to get something done there, and we just have to.
And we've been in some conversation, of course, we presented the other night to Health and Ed, our plan, we have out in the four-to-five-year range, an elementary school. We have, at that time, we talked about maybe another need in the Larnes-Smarter area, so the nine, those schools are close to 900 in that area. So, I mean, we're really hoping that Musburger City does pick up another elementary school, and between their new elementary school and Blackman Elementary School, both schools should be more reasonably, could handle it for a little while. But we had it in our long-winded building plan, an elementary school, was looking more at the Smarter-Larnes area, hoping that Musburger would pick that up.
You may mention also, in regards to the meeting the other night with the commission, basically what they, they took your proposal, but what they did is took it for one year. So when they look at the, look at what we sent, they're gonna look at your one-year deal, so you may, you may elaborate a little bit what's gonna happen with your sixth grade in regards to this middle school stuff also.
One program that we, to address the sixth grade in our first year, we're, and we have to go back to Health and Ed the next meeting to try to get the first year of that proposal, and Rutherford County is difficult to do five years out, you know, because it depends on what develops. But is to add on to Blackman Middle School, wasn't the most desirable thing we can do, but you pull out from that and create a sixth-grade wing. So in essence, you really almost, it'll kind of be like two schools on the same piece of property. We don't have to buy additional ground, but it was a two-story addition there, it has a play area to that, actually extending the cafeteria area basically for sixth grade, so hopefully there, as you certainly start getting middle schools, I, we prefer not for them to get much over 1,000, but in this case, what we're doing is trying to create a design, as we talked with our architect, that would kind of separate the students, where you don't have sixth grade and seventh and eighth grade crossing each other most of the time, except for some specialty areas, because with, we have science labs in the sixth grade proposed, we'd have the P.E. area in the sixth grade that is proposed, so we can handle almost all of their curriculum in that area that we're talking about adding on. That would buy us a little time in the middle school there, but there's no question that we're not far away, because when you look at the size of Oakland Middle School, when you look at the size of Siegel Middle School, we look at Brown's Chapel and all, there's not a great amount of capacity for us right around Musburger, other than Whitworth County, to pick up additional middle school students. So again, that was the other issue we talked about. The commission kind of said to us, hey, you got a $40 million high school, give us a year or two to absorb some of this, and see what we can, you know, and then open up to it. So we tried to initially look at this first-year proposal to build additional capacity in without the full cost of a school at this time, and we hope they'll be very open to that, that's our desire.
I think that's also their plan, is the way I read it, to basically focus on just one year at a time.
And that's, it's hard to go much beyond that, you know, it really is.
I mean, if you look at all these figures right now, we're in a crisis, and it's not gonna get any better, and, you know, so.
I mentioned to you before, I think our growth last year was 521 students, and of course, what really surprised us was, the economy's supposed to be down, and things are slowing down, and all of a sudden, we bounced back this year with, it was exactly 1,000 students between the end of the fourth month last year and the end of the fourth month this year. So it tells me that there's movement, something. Some of it is people coming back into Rutherford County public schools, some of it is growth areas and all too, so you're seeing a combination of the two, which resulted in the 1,000 drop.
Anybody else, any other comments?
We, you know, it's been this board's mission, and previous board's mission, to get as many children out of these portables back into the building. And these portables, although they're, hate to say adequate, but, you know, with our safety concerns, with that being on the forefront, I think we need to continue to move forward to use every means possible to get those students back inside the brick and mortar and get them out of portable. And sometimes it's gonna be inconvenient, and, but it's gotta be a priority of ours to get those children back in the building.
And Brown's Chapel would do that?
Yes, sir.
For those students to rezone if they're in there.
I think it's worth saying that I've been involved teaching, administrating in a school that was severely overcrowded, and I know what Ms. Ford deals with, and I think that's something that people do need to recognize, is that it compromises the education of all of our children when we put ourselves in a situation where we're just completely busting. And if we've got an option, we need to, we need, we've got to consider, I think that's what we're doing, and look at the best option. Needless to say, there's not a great option here, there really is not, especially for those that would be moving and would rather not do that, that's not a great option for them. I don't, we're not looking at an option here that is a great one. And as long as growth continues, and it's going to, everything that we see, building permits are up in Rutherford County, the growth is not going to slow down, and we'll, the board will be dealing with this, I'm old and gray, or old and baller.
Older and gray.
Older.
But, you know, we're, what, unemployment here, October 3, one of the lowest in the nation right now, with Nissan and Amazon, and like I said, people coming back to Rutherford County, and, you know, it's a place to find work, and we're an exemplary system, and people, people want to bring their children here. And I understand why, and happy that they want to live here with us and be our neighbors, but, you know, it behooves us to have to deal with this overcrowding, and like Mr. Tackett said, whatever option that's available to us, we're gonna have to take advantage of, even though many are not gonna like it. And I, and I hate it, but we've got to move children, we just cannot continue to stay overcrowded in Blackman Elementary like we have.
Actually, the Chamber of Commerce tells me that, in complement to Musburger City schools and Rutherford County schools, that the educational system is one of the things that's drawing people to Rutherford County. And they use it as a sales factor, as they're seeking other industries and people to locate, but, I mean, it is a huge factor in the growth and development of Rutherford County, the school system, and we need to try to deal with our crowding so that we can have high academic programs and expectations. That's, that's difficult. We need some remedial classes for some, you need accelerated classes for some, not everything just in a classroom, so schools actually do not need to use every room if you can so that you can do more individualization and address needs for smaller groups of students, and it takes some space to do that.
Presently, the students at Brown's Chapel Elementary largely feed into Stewart's Creek Middle, is that correct?
Largely, when you say, yeah, I will. Um, largely, when you say, yeah, I will. The next school closest to Brown Chapel is probably Stewart's Borough, and I've got the number there, but that's also a school with portable overcrowded, so that, I didn't really look at that, because our issue was, what can we do to get students again out of Blackman, because that, that's our focus, is that area.
These areas that we're looking to move out of the Blackman Elementary zone and into the Stewart's, or into the Brown Chapel zone, they'd return to Blackman Middle right now.
We haven't changed that zone.
Wouldn't change any of the middle school options.
Nothing, nothing's changed.
And, you know, and it's very typical for us, again, in schools, if people may not understand, it very often takes, it's two to three elementary schools will feed one middle school, and then typically, when your high school is fed by two middle schools. I mean, that, that's just really common, when you look at the dynamics of the numbers that you use, so it, it's kind of a, the way the feeder is, so it's not uncommon at all for two to three elementary schools to feed one middle school. I mean, you'll see that when you look at Oakland Middle and, and all other parts of the county.
I know it's not going to, it's not going to impact any of the people that are, are affected by this rezoning, but if we find that the sixth grade academy is particularly effective at Blackman Middle School, would it ever be appropriate, or are the dynamics just different for a similar type of expansion at an elementary school, where we have a very, very dense population, would, would you ever entertain an elementary school being designed, or, or, or the core being structured for a thousand, eleven hundred student population?
Well, we're actually doing that at, at Roy Waldron, which is, is in your district. You know, we talked about that because we were over nine hundred at Laverne Lake, our brand new school, putting portables there, in that, and we were, and that area's growing, but not expected to grow tremendously, because again, between the lake and the airport property and a lot of I-24 and all, should not go greatly, but they're seeing some apartments and all, yes. And an elementary school sometimes lends itself to that reasonably well, because your kindergarten, first, second grade, and that sort of thing, is somewhat different structure curriculum-wise than your third, fourth, and fifth, as you get in from the primary grades to the intermediate grades. So, yes, we're open to that, in fact, that's in our proposal, if you remember, to, to try to, begin to address that the same way at Roy Waldron right there.
Right, I knew it was there at Roy Waldron, I didn't know if it would be something at Blackman Elementary that, that could be an option.
We talked about that, I talked, spoke with Mr. Clardy, looking at, one of our problems there is simply space. It could be done, you could go out there and add another addition, but again, I, I prefer an elementary school not to get up to the fourteen hundred range or something. You know, really, from an instructional standpoint, I'd rather build another elementary school than to do a lot of that, but I just think you're more effective and efficient.
Well, we had traditionally bought enough acreage to do that, that, that has never really been in the master plan to, to make those schools that much larger, so.
We've started doing that in more recent years, like your Stewart's Creek area, your Blackman area, and actually over where Oakland High and Oakland Middle, with the city's John Pitter there, that's a similar complex, and I, I'll tell you, it's a traffic nightmare, but parents love it, because you really get to bring your, if you have children in, in multiple grades, you know, you make your delivery, we stagger the time a little bit to do, so it's very attractive.
I was talking about actually building onto an elementary, yeah, the complex, I think, is really an attractive situation for parents. Also, it causes us a lot of problems, though, when, when they don't get to go to that exact complex too, so.
Any changes? Anybody wants to look at?
Mr. Chairman, again, as we move forward, when we did Stewart's Creek rezoning, we went to the public forum essentially with one recommendation, and if it would be appropriate, I think I would like to make the director's recommendation a formal motion of the board that we could proceed into the public hearings, open to the, the public's input, but with that as a primary recommendation to be considered.
That'd be fine. Good motion, anybody got a second?
Second. And it's a model, it, it gives us a model to work from.
Correct. Mr. Blair seconded, all right, any further discussion?
Yeah, let me, let me just say, we, we've, we've just had experience with doing public hearings, and for those out here there that may think that it's, it's a done deal tonight, that it's not, because there were, there were some minor changes, or some changes made after public hearing, so that's what, that's what public hearings are for, and we, we will hear, and if there are better options than what's available, that, that have not been presented, that's what we're looking for. So that's, 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 it, it really not is if we're going to do, we got to do something. I mean, I, I, I firmly believe we've got to transfer some students, to me, it doesn't matter which ones, and if there is a, a better plan to, to, to get something in that range of a hundred and thirty students, so we get people from portables to real rooms, that's what I think we've got to do, but we're looking for those options.
Anybody else? I've had, we've got the motion from Mr. Holiday, and the second by Mr. Blair, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed to it? Motion passes. Uh, next step, it's going to be February thirteenth, public hearing, and I think it's six thirty at Brown's Chapel, and I believe we've got the next scheduled board meeting after that, Ms. Michaels, we're going to have this on the agenda at that time, correct?
Correct, that's how I understood it.
If the board's good with that, that's what we're going, that's what we'll go with.
And I assume that, Mr. Chairman, we'll, just like we did with the other ones, Ms. Michaels will list all of the suggestions, or...
Correct.
You know, be presented to the board.
And we'll get a recap from Ms. Michaels, from Mr. Evans, Mr. Morgan, I guess, and we'll try to keep comments to three minutes, just like we did before, and, and we'll move on, so.
I'm glad that Mr. Tackett mentioned that this is just a starting point, and that we have made corrections in the past that have been brought to our attention, so nothing is etched in stone at this point, it's just a place to start.
Correct. You got anything else, Mr. Blair?
Yes, sir.
Anybody else? If there's nothing else, we'll see everybody Tuesday night at Work Section. Word, John.